Were you?
Hey.
I need some guidance. Put into mind.
No, 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 we've got a few more weeks to talk about.
I tried it, I had no chance, and so really did my little friend out, so this is, this is the guy that God cannot give to me.
Yeah, they'll just have, they'll just have it playing.
They're like, this is absolutely short.
You've always had a passion for music.
Yeah, I think I can tell he's a little bit of a charmer.
But I just can't hold it on anymore.
Right.
Maybe the problem is that.
Thank you.
I never get around to it. You know what? I, I realize I have these things and I don't.
Yeah, we've got a lovely board.
It's like four different stuff.
Yeah, so is mine. I'm a fan.
Excuse me, ma'am?
So, um, we, I think that what the chancellor and Jack are confusing is that we took the ALA classrooms before, by the time that we created the day to floor in our team meeting about whether or not we need to go. So these are the construction contracts for, um, a year those time present for classroom, so they do need to go. I told Margaret you may want to see the plans, but we have some questions as an answer about what the components of the course is going to be. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and my point to the chancellor was, um, is there going to be an opportunity for you to be a trainer for, what you're going to, to talk about the 24th, the, the process, but they are aware for tomorrow, so you're going to be doing renovations to, uh...
You mean to the board?
To the board, as doing governance.
Did you not cover it in your presentation last week?
Okay, I think I talked short of the con, I'm sorry, I put it in 97, I'm cutting it so I don't remember at this point, but I think that's a great idea.
So, so, so that's... Okay, well, maybe we do it at governance in November, we'll, we'll see how full the agenda is, but that'd be a great opportunity, it's the first time we've looked at it.
You have an umbrella with a, what I call a culinary.
I got your email, but I haven't even looked at it.
From you on, you can keep them from...
I appreciate it.
Yes.
And maybe just one more theory, we have to spend a little time in that, in that. And they've got a description that they have, something they...
No, it just reminded me.
It'd be nice if we could, if we could say this illustration that they have. Because I remember in our last discussion on governance, that, uh, she is more than a paper, and I was really, 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 more focused on governance and, uh, that, she could sort of remember that, but the job is something different, but he might have been telling her, I guess, a lot about it.
And I'll, I'll do, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
Everybody's got it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
I think Steve will be real close.
Everybody's got it.
I know that.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
I think Steve will be real close.
I kind of...
You know that.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
I think Steve will be real close.
I kind of...
You know that.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
And I'll, I'll do it, and it's definitely over, uh, I think I started, so I'll do it.
Everybody's quiet. Uh, we'll bring the, uh, Thursday, October 24th, meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College to order. Is there any public comments? No public comments? Um, then we need to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Is this for both minutes? We have two.
I would move to approve the minutes for September the 19th, 2019.
And I second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
And I would also move to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Morrison, and a second by Dr. Evans. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. All right, trustee committee reports. Uh, first of all, governance. We met, it seems like a month ago, um, in governance, and we discussed all of the items that we're, uh, talking about today in terms of, uh, purchasing various items and services, and discussed them in full, so if we're very brief tonight, it's because we've had a full discussion, uh, a week and a half ago. Uh, audit and finance, uh, Mr. Greenhill?
Yes, uh, trustee Ayala is, uh, not here tonight, uh, but I was, uh, on the vice chair and was, was present, and the audit finance committee did meet, uh, this, uh, this week. Uh, the audits conducted were related to, uh, internal audit of the, our Board of Trustees' expenses in accordance, uh, with the fiscal year audit plan, and it, uh, we, our expenses are within the framework of, of being good. The internal, uh, we also, the internal audit of the aviation program, verifying if program costs are in accordance with TCCD policy and procedures and federal guidelines. Uh, TCC offers an associate of applied science degree in aviation technology, uh, that is subject to FAA regulations, and, uh, sometimes, uh, we do or do not, uh, comply with all these very, very complicated, uh, rules, uh, but, uh, the, the audit, uh, was completed and, uh, adjustments were made. Then there was a fiscal year 2019 internal audit report in accordance with the government code that requires higher educations, uh, education institutions to report on publicly po, and publicly post certain information regarding the details of the approved audit plan and planned, and any findings and deficiency, and, and this, uh, the report was, was excellent and, uh, was goo, and was good. Uh, Mr. Chair, I, uh, I, we, we, we voted to accept the internal audit reports, and I make a motion that does not need a second to, uh, that we accept the reports of the, uh, of the internal auditor.
Okay. All in favor? Accept that report? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Uh, trustee activities, uh, Mr. Greenhill, is there anything on CAT that you would like to?
Oh, uh, CCATT, uh, well, I missed the ACCT meeting, uh, the, uh, in San Francisco, and I hear that there were some very, uh, excellent, uh, meetings of the CATT members, uh, breakfast and, and a presentation. Uh, Rose Martinez, our Director of Trustee Strategies, resigned, and, and we're, uh, coming back to, uh, coming back together again. Uh, we will have a, uh, a, a regional leadership conference in San Antonio on December the 6th, and we're gonna have one, uh, in South Texas, uh, South, South Texas later on, uh, next year. Also, as a, I, I also attended, just to say that I attended the, um, the, uh, the Chambers, um, Higher Education, State of Higher Education, uh, event this week, and, uh, the chancellor was there and, and made a very good presentation about, uh, our colleges, the TCU president was there as well, uh, as, who else was there? The, uh...
Kabari.
The Dr. Kabari from, uh, from, uh, UTA. So it was a very interesting meeting, and, uh, a lot of good things were said about our bond program, of which we can advocate, so I would like to encourage you, uh, in that regard, to make sure you go out and vote. That's what, that's my report. Thank you. You're welcome.
Dr. Evans?
I was just going to encourage everyone to vote, as well.
Amen. Dr. Morrison?
Good evening, and thank you. It's a delight for me to be here with you on this rainy Thursday afternoon, when all of you would rather be home in your warm pajamas and drinking hot chocolate with the book. However, we are here together, and I am excited to share a couple of things. My pictures were too, uh, much to download, so I didn't get to send original pictures, but I want to tell you that you missed it. October 4th, on TCC South Campus, the eighth year of the intergenerational community conversation, we knocked it out of the park with more, about 500 participants from 55 the first year. So, thanks to, uh, a district-wide team that was led by Andrew Duffield, and, um, the staff on South Campus, of course, was most hospitable and capable, so you do, staff does have pictures, great. I was gonna do a video of Dr. Ayers, who did a most delightful orientation, so we'll have to get her on video another time. The person that you see there, former coach for the Wings, and, uh, she's now retired, that fascinated all of the students, that she's retired at her age, so she's had a phenomenal career. Uh, it was an awesome, uh, event. We had, did have some elders there, and we had lots of high school students and college students, and, uh, persons of all generations, so we're already planning for next year's conversation. You just don't want to miss it. Thank you. It's also been my privilege this month to, uh, participate in a couple of community, um, education opportunities, and I was joined by the chancellor at the Minority Leaders and Citizens Council luncheon, where he gave an excellent information presentation about the upcoming bond issue, and I reminded everybody of how great TCC is, and how they always supported us, and we're looking for their support, um, now through November 5th. And today, he came and joined us for a Unity in the Community meeting. It's a group associated with, there's a picture, wow, staff is just on, on top of it. Um, community leaders from different aspects of the community, who come together to get information and take it back to their different groups. So chancellor and staff did an excellent presentation, of course, we're gonna have great support. Um, the great thing about the success of TCC is that it was founded on the right principles. So when you start right, you do a great job, there's no reason for anyone not to fully continue to support us, so thank you chancellor. He has some tough questions, but, you know, he stood right there, and he handled it well, so I was excited to be able to, uh, share the podium with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
It's nice to be recognized, it's a little lonely at this end of the table. Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to report on. One is that, uh, several of the members of the board, and, and the chancellor, and Vice Chancellor Gates, attended the Association of Community College Trustees in San Francisco last week. A good meeting, uh, it was very helpful for me for several, uh, several reasons. I think it helped me understand a lot more about the, the business of community colleges. I, I've been telling people that, uh, like with most things in life, uh, the college is a lot more complicated than it looks like from the outside. Uh, there are just a lot of moving parts. Uh, one of the things I took away from, from the ACCT meeting was that Tarrant County College has its ACT together better than just about anybody, and, and I think, uh, you know, we've got things to work on, their issues and all of that, but the fact of the matter is, uh, this, this district is a leader, uh, and, and it's clear when you look at what other college districts are doing and, and struggling with. The chancellor and, and Mr. Heaton made a presentation on partnerships that was well-received as one of the best presentations, excuse me, one of the best presentations, uh, that I heard, and there were lots of, lots of panel discussions and, and presentations. We came away looking very good. Uh, the other thing I would report to you is that, uh, as a new trustee, uh, I've been, along with the chancellor, I've been touring campuses, and, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we were at the Trinity River Campus, both, uh, the east and, and west versions of that. Uh, it, it was a, an eye-opening tour. I came away from it impressed, uh, by the friendliness of the people, but, uh, the, the diversity of programs that are being offered, and the commitment, it was obvious from the members of the staff that, uh, that we visited with. Great experience, uh, next time I wear a tie, I guess, if you look at the picture. But, but it, it was, it was time well-spent from my perspective, and I appreciate. I know every time that the chancellor and, and a board member comes to a campus, it, uh, it's pretty disruptive, I suspect, so I appreciate, Dr. Madison, uh, the time that you all put into getting ready and showing us around. Uh, it was a good tour, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we, uh, we had four trustees that attended the, uh, the meeting at the ACT Conference in San Francisco, um, and I, I think that gives us an incredible opportunity to learn the best practices of community colleges all across the, the land, um, and, and I just want to thank the college and the chancellor for supporting us going to these conferences. Uh, I, I think it's, it's reaping great dividends. Uh, also, I want to echo the, uh, comments down here, this election is, is probably not going to be well-attended, is, it is not going to be a whole lot of votes, and, uh, so we urge you to please go out and, and vote, every single person, it's, every vote is important. Uh, we, I will say, we had an election of officers of our ACT organization, and the person, there was four people vying for three positions, there were two votes separating number one and number four. I mean, one guy lost by one vote, so every vote is just absolutely critical, so we urge you to do that.
How did you do as teller? Well, how was your experience as, as teller for one of the elections?
As teller, I told, I mean, I did. It was pretty good, uh, the first go-round was, there was, there was, uh, just one candidate, so that went very quickly.
So that makes it good, okay.
We didn't have to count votes. The second time for the senate election, uh, we actually had a machine.
Oh.
Yeah, we did, so, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you for that, uh, recommendation, uh, Mr. Greenhill, that was muchly appreciated. Now, we will consider action items. Item five on the agenda, consideration approval of South Campus Health and Physical Education Building Bleachers Replacement Contract with Game Court Services in the amount of $153,175. Mr. Prather?
Yes, sir, this is replace the original equipment with, uh, new mechanically activated and ADA compliant bleachers. It will accommodate about 250, 300 people.
Okay. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item six, consideration approval of staff relocation projects Phase 2B design contract with Bennett, Benner Partners in the amount of $1,562,326.49.
Yes, sir, this is the, move the MOC project to the design phase. We've already gone through programming, so we're ready to get you moved out of here.
Okay. Discussion, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion by, by Greenhill, second by Dr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration approval of Hermacy Johnson Hadley Northwest Campus Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics, HVAC, uh, replacement Phase 1, related, related contracts in a total amount of $960,274.70, not to exceed, and that includes a, uh, contract to TD Industries for the mechanical installation, amount of $420,067.28. TD Industries for the electrical installations, $127,057.8, and Trevino Group, the general contractor, for $413,150.34. So any?
Yes, sir, this is part of our five-year MEP master plan. Additional work will be done over the next two years.
Okay. Discussion, questions?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Greenhill, a second by Dr. Morrison and Dr. Evans. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. I'd like to make note that these two, uh, contractors, one is in Dallas and one is in Minnesota, but they, they also both have Fort Worth offices. Item eight, consideration approval of Northwest Campus Redevelopment Design Contract Phase 2A with Huckabee Inc., in the amount of $13 million, not to exceed.
Yes, sir, this is for design services and construction documents for the first phase of the re, redevelopment of Northwest. This will allow for construction of new buildings that does not impact the existing structures. They have made a 21% MWV commitment in categories including engineering, acoustical services, cost estimating, and MEP peer review, and among others.
Okay. Questions, discussion? What, what was AMWV?
21%.
21%. Okay. Question, discussion? Move for approval?
Second.
Dr. Morrison, second, Dr. Evans, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I'd also like to mention that Huckabee, their offices, principal offices are in Fort Worth. There's been a concern that we, we need to buy locally where we get our tax support, and we're doing that. Mr. Pacheco. Item nine, consideration approval of contract award for development of Business Continuity Disaster and Disaster Recovery Plan, parentheses, BC slash DRP, parentheses, with Ancora Consulting Group LLC, in the amount of $196,500.
Yes, we're seeking approval for this Business Continuity Disaster Recovery Plan. This is for Phase 1, where we develop the project itself, and then Phase 2, next year, will be actual implementation of that.
Okay. Discussion, questions?
So move.
Dr. Evans moves for approval, Mr. Greenhill second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 10, consideration approval of contract renewal of IBM Storage Power Support Maintenance with Sirius Computer Solutions, Inc., in the amount of $154,592.51.
Yes, this is for our ERP storage system, which is based on an IBM system, and this is for the one-year contract for power support and, uh, contract, uh, and service maintenance on it.
Questions, discussion?
So move.
Dr. Evans, motion by Dr. Evans, second by Mr. Greenhill, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 11, consideration approval of a three-year renewal agreement with Cisco Smart Net Software Support Maintenance with SHI International Corporation, in the amount of $995,915.80, and of that, $331,971.93 annually.
Yes, this is our three-year annual maintenance agreement for our Cisco equipment, which pretty much runs our entire network and phone system, uh, across the district.
Questions, discussion? Motion by, to Dr. Morrison?
Second.
Second by Mr. Greenhill, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 12, consideration approval of contract award with indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, IDIQ, multiple firms for information technology consulting and staffing partnership to support with IT project plan in the amount of $2 million, not to exceed.
Yes, this is part of our RFQ that we placed out this summer to identify firms that will help us with, uh, staffing as well as consultant services across IT, as well as supporting a 3G AP.
Questions, discussion?
So move.
I, I just had a question. I, I dug through there, I was trying to understand, um, and, and I have no problem with it, except I was trying to understand, at what point do you come to, uh, cost of services and, and allocation amongst those various vendors? It's an on-call or on-demand type service?
That's correct. So it'll be based on project, and so, uh, when we were working on the budget earlier in the year, we decided that instead of bringing on permanent employees, which we had talked, uh, last week in governance, so by doing this by project base, we have a six-month or six-week project, we would bring them on there, and so we will be bidding them against each other to get the best price as well as the best service.
Okay, so there'll be competition?
Yes.
Competition amongst them to, as appropriate with the vendors?
That's correct. And each of them have given us their not-to-exceed prices, and so we'll be using that, uh, as well.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Here, motion?
So move.
By Dr. Mr. Greenhill, second by Dr. Morrison, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 13, consideration approval of contract renewal for online test and, uh, test proctoring and authen, authentication services with Proctor IO, in the amount of $225,500. services with Procter IO in the amount of $225,000.
Yeah. Procter IO, Procterio, I'm sorry, is a testing and authentication service that we use for our test and connect. And this is a one-year contract that we have done before.
Questions, discussion, motion?
I move to approve.
Aye. Mr. Greenhill, second. By Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item 14. Consideration approval of the purchase of a Ferrari, a Ferrara. Cinder pumper fire truck from Lone Star Emergency Group for firefighter training program at Northwest Campus.
Yes, this will just modernize the equipment available for our firefighter training program to accommodate the needs of those students.
Questions, discussion? Motion?
I move to approve.
I second it.
Dr. Evans, second. By Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. You have your Ferrari.
Thank you.
And you look real good in it.
I've always wanted one.
Okay. Monthly financial report.
Yeah. So in your packet today, you've got the financials that describe the first month of our fiscal year. And we're on track, obviously, with the percentage of receipts and expenditures. I will point out that in November, you will receive the audited financial statements from our auditor. We'll be here so that we can talk more about how we concluded last year. But it's pretty early in the year and we're on track. Also, in your packet is the investment portfolio report. And you'll note that during this time of year, obviously, we've got more expenditures going out. It's not as much tax money coming in. And so our pool portfolio has decreased slightly. But our yield at this point is 2.2%, and our weighted average maturity is at 369 days. Okay. And then also, in your packet is the information from our mineral trust investment report that you have available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Chancellor's report.
Thank you. Dr. Madison. Thank you, Dr. Giovinini, board of trustees. It is my esteemed pleasure to introduce Dr. Susan B. Priest, who was recently appointed Assistant Dean of Clinical Nursing for Tarrant County College's Nursing Program. Dr. Priest has enjoyed a successful 20-year career in nursing education, including appointments at Auburn University, the University of Texas at Austin, Alvin Community College, and Houston Baptist University. She earned her Bachelor and Master of Science degrees in nursing from the University of Texas Health Science Center School of Nursing. Her Master of Science focused on emergency care nursing. Susan holds a Doctorate of Nursing Practice in Educational Administration from American Sentinel University. Her doctoral studies focused on changes in the emotional intelligence scores of baccalaureate nursing students after implementation of the team-based learning pedagogy. Dr. Priest also has advanced practice nursing certification as a clinical nurse specialist in medical surgical nursing. She also served the Hampton King Law Firm as an in-house legal nurse consultant. Immediately prior to her appointment at Tarrant County College, she served as the Director for the Online RN to BSN Program at Houston Baptist University and as the President of the Faculty Assembly. She received the 2003 Distinguished Alumni Award from the University of Texas School of Nursing in Houston and the 1987 United States Air Force Billy J. Brown Award for Teaching Excellence from the University of Texas at Austin. Dr. Priest is married and has two grown sons, a daughter-in-law and a grandson. Active in church ministries, Dr. Priest led 15 mission trips to Mexico. She enjoys gardening, reading, hiking, and family time. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Susan Smith. Please welcome.
Dr. Giovinini, Mr. Heed, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as Assistant Dean of Nursing. I am delighted to join this team of professionals committed to advancing the nursing profession and supporting workforce development efforts throughout the region. Tarrant County College is investing in the future of Tarrant County by making TCC a place where the student feels supported and valued. The principle of supporting the student aligns well with my personal philosophy of advancing the next generation of professional registered nurses, entering the nation's most trusted profession. I look forward to working with Dr. Ume, Dr. Mills, and Dr. Madison to bring my energy, my creativity, and my outside-the-box thinking to the college and to my sphere of influence. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
As was alluded, I've had the opportunity this last month to educate a whole bunch of different folks related to our bond package. Civic organizations, economic development organizations, mayors, councils, as well as visiting most of our campuses to share. And all in all, the message has been very well received. And I think that's a testament to the work that this college has always done from a reputation standpoint. So I want to thank sort of the faculty and staff for that reputation. But then also, the work that's been done to plan over the last three years, this bond proposition. And so the materials speak for themselves, if you will, very well received. And I want to thank the board for its support to the point where we're at right now. Thank you.
And I'd like to say, since I was with the chancellor for some of those presentations and another one in the morning, he gives an outstanding presentation and then asks for questions. And there's been some very good questions, but then it all changed to accolades. It's amazing how many people just love Tarrant County College. And they want to tell their stories. So thank all of you for all your efforts over all these years to make that happen. We will now enter a closed session. The board will conduct a closed meeting as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code in order to: A. Seek the advice of its attorney; B. Deliberate real property matters; C. Deliberate personnel matters; or D. Deliberate securities, devices, or security audits. We will reconvene after closed session.
We'll reconvene our official board meeting and I'll let you take the motion.
Second the motion.
Mr. Greenhill moves we adjourn and Dr. Evans seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Motion carries.